Offered by Reverend Mark Smith, pastor of Thrive Church.
Let's pray. Lord, I ask tonight, as we go into this time of prayer, Lord, that you would do for the people in this room, or what you were doing for me on the way over here. And that, Lord, is to look at our hearts and our minds towards you. Jesus, I can't improve on you. You said more than anything to love one another. So, Lord, I pray tonight, Father, that that would be our heart. That, Lord, our hearts would be softened, that we would be tender towards you. Lord, that we would love you. Lord, that we would call on you. Lord, I ask, as a pastor, as one of many pastors in this great city, I ask for a revival, Lord. A revival of your Spirit of love, the love of Jesus Christ to wash over our hearts. Lord, I ask you, Lord, to forgive me. Lord, where I have failed the men on this council in not keeping them in prayer like I should. Lord, that I haven't kept our mayor in prayer like I should. Lord, I ask that you forgive me. I'll be the first. I ask, Lord, that you soften my heart. Lord, that you tenderly touch my heart and touch the hearts of our community and the leadership of our community. Lord, that a revival would sweep across our churches, a revival in the hearts of the pastors, the leaders of this community, Lord. That, Lord, it would begin in us. It would begin in our pulpits. Lord, that it would begin where we are softened and, Lord, we are before you, Lord, with our own hearts, tender towards you, by the power of your Holy Spirit. Lord, I ask for your blessing upon each and every one of these aldermen. That you bless them and their families, Lord. You bless their children. You bless their grandchildren. That you bless them in their health. That you bless them, Lord, in their walk with you. Or that you bless our mayor with all those same wonderful blessings. And that you bless the people of the city of Camden. I thank you, Lord, that the city of Camden is meant to be a city on a hill whose light cannot be hid because our hearts are towards you. Lord, you're our only hope. You're our only help. And so, Lord, tonight, I just humble myself first and say, "Lord, help us. Be in our midst by your Spirit and bring healing and bring hope and bring tenderness to our hearts and our minds." In Jesus' name, I pray these things in all humility and humbleness before you, Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
Of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Wilkerson.
Here.
Askew.
Here.
Devois.
Reddick.
Moore. Rinnick.
Here.
Chastelary.
Here.
Arden. Next, we'll move to the approval of the minutes from our June meeting.
This must be a question. On the final page, A, other minutes. We have everybody on the table, A. All the members and myself present.
Yeah, I got that. Then Michael just committed something else out. Um, on page two, oldestness, number one, or six point four, it says, "Second meeting," got given earlier. Did anybody else find anything?
And do we have a motion to approve with the corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll move to the financial report for June.
May I ask you a question?
Discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
A few questions.
Yes, sir.
How do we approve this foundation? When we get approved, right? There's nothing else?
You haven't been able to through any of the minutes, I mean, any of the financial files. Honestly, I don't expect it to be like this.
Well, we didn't go over it because you said we had some discrepancies.
In last month, yes, 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 I know.
So, we didn't go over it.
Right, but the previous month before that. How did we prove?
I don't know what the question is.
It was a payroll mistake. I didn't go into detail with it. But there was a problem with it's got a three out of each account. It came out of bill, and that had to be fixed because it's not supposed to come off in the bill.
Okay, so even when you say I don't approve any financial report, you have right here, it says that we did not approve it. So, Lord, what I did was enough. How do you prove it?
Yes, sir.
I've got, I guess, a few comments that I'd like to make. I really don't know what the proper procedure for this comes up for. And looking, I've looked at the ones before and I saw the one called mistakes, imperfections, misprints in some of them. And I really didn't want to approve them the way they were either. Anyway, looking at this one where she's kind of just culminated and put all six months in a lump sum deal. And I can see you're showing the month of June with these huge payroll amounts. And the month of June is where she is paying and saying, "Well, I'm making the corrections for the payroll that was misapproved." You just lumped the correction into the beginning month. But looking through it, and I'm gonna say, I've got a couple of issues with the way some of this is presented here. But it's mostly cleaned up and I think the year-to-date information we're looking here is accurate. And I won't say without, you know, maybe a bling or share there, but nothing big major, mostly right. And I'm gonna say, I'm kind of pleased with a couple of things. The way the revenue is coming in a little above and we're seeing like controlled expenses. And let me just say, the thing I was looking at before that I got into, what had worried me was the solid waste fund and that we needed to get that back in balance without having to transfer out of our general fund into the solid waste fund or maybe the street fund, the solid waste fund. We've corrected a lot of that. And what I found out last year, and I'm gonna ask the question, I think I sent you an email late this afternoon to you and the mayor about, anyway, the information you were able to give me when I asked you last month about the water department found about sixty-three or sixty-nine thousand dollars worth of monies that they had not correctly funded us. They had had their books locked, anyway, they weren't paying us all they should have. So, we got a bonus there in the solid waste account. And it looks to me like you've just put that in with the regular collections. Well, I would like it so that we can track how our solid waste collections are matching with our budget. I tried to look, you've got six months, we should be about fifty percent of the year in our budget. Well, this distorts it. That's what made me notice it, that we'd be a hundred percent of the collection fees already for this year. That's, I think that sixty thousand is put in there, but I don't know that. Now, I would put that down in a different category that says prior year's corrections or something like that so it doesn't distort our this-year budget collections because we need to know what that's really running for this year so that we can budget properly for next year. That would be my suggestion on that. But I guess what I'm saying is, I think we've got some presentation issues with what this printout is, but I think the numbers look good. And I would hope we go ahead and pass this one. I would think that if we wanted to say, well, if we want to go back and reprint the months that we didn't approve, February, March, April, May, and vote on one at a time, I'm more interested in the year-to-date than I am month by month for me. So, that's all. I hope we approve it.
I have a question. So, what you're saying, that what we're looking at tonight, May is lumped into this? Is that what you were saying?
Well, let me just say, on the payroll correction she made, let me see, and it's basically in the street fund and the solid waste. Street and solid waste. You'll see it shows the month of June for the solid waste, shows regular salaries, ninety-eight thousand dollars. Well, that's not the year-to-date. So, that is where she was catching up these other months and making the corrections so that the year-to-date, the January to June next column is correct for the year, though. Am I saying that right now?
Yes, we can't go back and do this for the previous month because that will bring in an accounting problem. And it probably is a little off. So, if we fix everything, we note that what happened, what happened, how we fixed it. And the software F C S A also has to do something to put with it. So, we have to do something to put it on, so it's all right here.
So, what I'm trying to say is, the month of June is overstated in that month of June column. But the year-to-date, the January to June, that part is accurate. Looking the way I'm seeing it. And it comes out where the percentages are about what we'd expect.
It's fine and dandy, but back to what Alderman McCourt said. And, you know, we're approving the previous minutes and the financial reports. And it says that we'll approve May to get tabled to July. So, what we're saying, May is lumped into this? Or we just not going to approve May's financial report? Ma'am?
You see days last month.
But we tabled it, right?
Yes. So, the corrections or the problems that I asked you to take before, those corrections show up here too.
So, May's financial report, it just don't get approved, voted on, it just?
To here. If I print it out, it's gonna be exactly the same as it was. But I wanted to be able to fix it. It's not showing in May's day. It's showing in June's day.
All right. So, pretty much everything is lumped there. Like, say, for example, solid waste, that's eleven eleven, fifty-one four twenty. One of April, because it was May when we had this here. So, the government life insurance is about sixty-nine hundred dollars. But it has for the month of June, eighteen thousand nine hundred twenty-two. So, that lumped up together, this is a better, more correction.
Yes. Because everything came out of the way it should have been, but had been cleared with solid waste here. And so, I'll cover it here. And then we direct it.
This is only a financial report.
I T L everything now.
Something, yeah.
I just have one question.
What do we have on the financial situation?
I'm going to update that in the mayor's report. I have an update on that in the mayor's report. For part of the issues of the council, to be clear, I did ask about the other months being printed out. And those certainly can be printed out for you.
But they don't look the same as they were first?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Because the corrections she did come out in this month. She has been on Zoom with Ms. Boye and different ones to correct this to make sure she was getting things proper here.
I understand. Yeah. All I would want to know is, I mean, it doesn't matter when you print this out, my thing is, whatever correction she made, she could have printed those corrections out before us. That we could have made by what she said, well, I correct X, Y, Z. And this is A, B, C, or what have you. That's all I want. I understand what people are saying, but word of mouth is not good for me. I do better on paper. That's all I want to say.
It would just be really hard for me to approve a month. Say, we voted on month May. Now, it would be hard for me to vote to approve month May knowing that it would have mistakes in it. It would just be nothing. Even though the mistakes were corrected, unlike you, I need more information.
I've been looking at this and reading it. I'm beginning to get an understanding of it. But after, you know, this one month, I'm back in town. It put me off for a misunderstanding with you and others. I'll have to see, I'm kind of in the same way. I'll have to kind of see it in detail. I get a better understanding. I can see the discrepancies.
I don't know. I need very few more to crack. Back in December, I asked for a print of what was the money market accounts, the C D accounts. Those accounts were changed from one month to another. I didn't know what was in there the other day. So, if I could get that forensic audit we've been talking about and find out what was there and bring it up to where we are now and what we should have had there and and maybe we can get some of this stuff out.
The money market accounts weren't new.
They weren't new?
And then you have to separate.
We're getting the information. Whether they were moved in, we just got the information issue. Changed it back. Am I right?
The payroll was all that was moved.
No, no. What did we change?
The payroll account was not.
What was the payroll?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a record debt when she changed it? What was there when we changed it?
Yes, sir.
We don't?
Yes, sir.
Can I do that?
Yes, sir. I'm sure you can.
I've been asking for it. Or what? Another day, we want to print it probably on this. I don't know if I can figure all this out. We really don't. No disrespect for you, but you have a job that you're supposed to be. I understand. I would like to be paid like that too. But we need the sauce and the broth before we can fix it. We need to get some established people in the position, certification, qualified way.
I've made a copy. We will give you that information.
What I got? Can I sit and talk with you sometime?
Yes, sir. So, would you like to make a motion to table this? And then get all the copies next month with explanation?
I can't prove anything to get everything solved. So, I have to really get my book.
Would you like to make a motion?
I like it.
Make a motion to table until next month and bring all the copies?
I'll make a motion to table. But you're coming back to the same thing next month. You're going to decide yourself.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstained?
Let me ask a question, follow up on that. So, what are you expecting? For you to vote for approving the June report, what are you expecting to see? Are you expecting to see five separate months? January, February, March, April, or whatever? In a new report? That it's the same as what you had before? And I'm gonna say, I can agree with certainly the part that Willie brought up about saying, "Well, okay, we had this in May. What are these chain adjustments that we had to make from the other?"
An explanation of adjustments.
What they were. But I've spent some time looking at it and nothing.
And I think that's where we all disagree, but I disagree. I think we got to go back to when the storm started. Do you go back to the storm start, you'll never know where you came? I can't bounce my book once in a while. I have to bounce my book and change to keep up with what I feel and what comes in. And I haven't seen that in the last, and I'm just being, for me, seven, eight months. It goes all the way back to December, November, actually. And when the young lady said that she moved her account. It was authorized to move her account. She said that she moved in one. Else they wouldn't get it on. Did she come to you?
She did, and the lady from Farmers Bank came in here and offered their services, what they would do, what they would walk alongside with us. And it was local where we would have someone to talk to if there was any issues.
So, it was your decision and not her decision? But the accountant was moving when she made the announcement. So, I'm trying to find, was it your decision?
It was both.
That's not, I didn't get that perception that came out. I did. I looked at it.
Okay, can we move forward now? Okay, we are going to move to audience participation. When your name is called, come to the podium. You will have three minutes. Mr. Vaughn will be starting the timer. The clock is up here. State your name and your address. Please keep your comments to within the three minutes. According to what we adopted the first of the year, we will hold questions and comments to the end of the meeting. Brian Smith.
Brian Smith, two twenty-three North Street, Camden, Arkansas. I come here to address complaints against your leadership, Mayor Charlotte Young, and also Victory Church LLC. I've said some words on Facebook and said some things. And I'm coming to you in confidence and taking my glasses off and apologizing for that. But I need your leadership and the city of Camden working not for me, not for my agenda, but for all of the city of Camden. I am the co-owner of F N H Jump Removal LLC. And Victory Church has caused negligence against my business, my wife, and my family. I'm gonna pass this brochure to the city council and then I want the audience to pass it around and look at this. Start with you, Mr. Lindsey. Victory Church LLC owns the property next to my house on two twenty-three North Street. The grass has been growing so tall and they are aware that it posts to be cut every year. There has been snakes killed in that yard. My cat has killed a snake in that yard. We got kids playing basket. So, I took it like the first order of century when I was at ROTC, take charge of this post and all government property in view. I took initiative because me drinking a beer when this went all about the distillery and alcohol and the police while this was going on, I get called out of Branson, Missouri for drinking a beer. Now, whether that's your belief or not my belief, I'm being tired of being judged and hated by the citizens or anybody, regardless of race, color, gender, et cetera. F N H Jump Removal and Log Carrier LLC loves to do business with anyone and everyone, regardless. But, Mayor, I need your help to push that. And then, Mr. Tom and Jeanette, no disrespect, but you're sending letters out to these elderly people that do not have no caregiver or nothing that can clean their yards. And I'm using my blood, sweat, and hands to help clean these yards. Sometimes I don't even charge nothing. I've asked the state and the city help give me a grant. And I've also wanted to purchase that blue F-150 at the landfill because I'm down on a truck. The superintendent or nobody has got back at the public works. But I'm willing to buy that truck. Not only that, but my dad's blood, sweat, and tears went on working and building that truck along with all the equipment. But I'm here coming to table, not only as a man of God, but with confidence because confidence is what helped me lost weight, to work with you and everyone. Now, we need to get it together. It's not about just downtown, Short Street, North Street. It's all about Camden. But I need your help. And everybody's helping, code enforcement. And without, let's get it done, let's get it done. Thank you.
Jeanette, can I get his name again?
Brian Smith. Next. Lily Gossit.
Lily Gossit, two ninety Parker Avenue, Northwest. Mayor, City Councilman. I know everybody know what I'm up here for. But I received a letter from the city of Camden about the ordinance that you guys revamped. This letter is stating, everybody that I've showed it to is saying the same thing. This letter is stating, like, this house on two ninety Parker is my house. That I am responsible for the repairs on the house. That is not my house. The landlord came by yesterday. I've been there, she been my landlord for four years. I met her twice. The first time when she came to see about the coons. The second time she came to pick up the rent, which was yesterday. And she proceeded to tell me that she had been up here to talk to the code man. And she told them that she couldn't afford to fix the house. That it was gonna cost her thirty thousand dollars to fix the house. So, my thing is, I wanna know, because on this letter, it states that, uh, after the nineteenth of this month, that it will be a misdemeanor charge if nothing has been done of a hundred dollars. I wanna know who got to pay this hundred dollars. Because like I said, this letter came to me certified, like, that's my property, and it's not. For some reason, she feel like she can do what she want, when she want? And like she told me yesterday, I don't wanna lose you as a tenant. You good, you pay your rent on time, fix the problem. Now, you said you was gonna recode it last month, so I guess this is a new coding that y'all did. So my question is to the council, what y'all gonna do now? Because she said thirty thousand dollars. And you say thirty thousand dollars like it is a lot of money to you. You got thirty-five rent houses, plus you sell houses, and it's insurance on that house. So you gonna tell me you can't fix this house? What you want to do is, you want to tell me them to code that house, condemn it. You gonna go in there and you gone.
Thank you, Ms. Gossit. Okay. Next.
Can we get an answer on the, the misdemeanor letter?
At the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Sam Mulligan?
My name is Sam Mulligan, I live in 904 Tate. After listing some of these concerns, my concern probably not that big a deal, but to me it was. My concern was over the ordinance that was recently passed or being passed about making it illegal to put a dog on a tether or chain, and if you do, you have to be supervised. And what I got here, I'll pass out, is just some of the proposed changes, and I wish y'all would consider the changes, um, on there and then pass that through. But like I said, my concern is, you know, I've been keeping dogs for a long, all my life, and I've had them on cable chains, whatever, and I'm afraid you're gonna, you know, good people that are taking care of their animals, I know the intent of the ordinance was, some people leave their dog on a chain or cable and they let it die right there, because, but the point is, really, it dies because they didn't come and take care of it. If you take care of them properly, you know, it's not an issue to keep them on cable or chain. And there were some other verbiage in there about chokers, you know, I think the verbiage was about if you had it on cable, you couldn't have a choker, but on leash, there are some dogs you need to have a choker, chain on, you know, they're very aggressive or big, strong dogs, keep them under control. So that's why I put in there about the leash, patient, being legal to have a leash with a choker on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sir, next.
Next is Bishop Arnold.
Bishop Arnold, 518 Sharp. First of all, I wanna say, my name is Bishop Arnold, as you know. I live at 518 Sharp Avenue. I stand before you as a concerned resident of Ward One, as I am proud of a, you know, I'm from a Camden public housing. Why do I introduce myself that way? It's because public safety is not just singular, a Berg problem or a project problem, it is a citywide problem, and it should be top priority for the council and the mayor. Crime has no boundaries. Bullets have no names. Crimes lowers property value and destroys the quality of life in public housing. So why repeatedly being ignored by you, Mayor Young, when I have respectfully asked for you to convene a town hall meeting to address this issue with me? Why isn't any alderman requesting the mayor to do something? The absence of leadership is not from behind, but it's from the front. Although I'm only one standing before you, being mindful, not ignoring you, but making sure you understand that the residents deserve better. Now, there was a shooting, three, that happened in your city on your watch. Mayor, I respect you as a woman of God, I respect you, I respect leadership, but you announced everything else, but you have yet to address the shooting in Lincoln Center, Fort Lookout, and Missouri Street. And I asked a question tonight, and I'm gonna make sure I stay here to the end of the meeting, because you said you're gonna answer all questions and concerns at the end of the meeting. My question is, how is it that you can announce everything else, but you do not announce the safety of the people that lives in Lincoln Center, Fort Lookout, Missouri Street, in Berg? Because I live on Sharp Street, and we had crime that happened on our street, and the subject got arrested in our yard. I woke up one morning, police officer all in my yard, coming down my driveway with guns pulled. So that lets me know, Mayor and City Council, it's not just certain areas as we may wanna put in our mind. Crime has no boundaries, and it's getting worse in Camden, and I, and I, my hat goes off to the police department. They doing what they need to do. Hats off to them for what they did, they caught the young man. But why? I live in, I pay big taxes to live where I live. It don't matter, because guess what? Crime, safety should be priority. And Mayor, if you can get on there and speak about everything else, then speak about the residents of Lincoln Center and Fort Lookout. I went to talk to them, and right now, they're scared. I had some young men come to my church today, and I asked them, how did you feel when the bullets were flying? They said, we're scared. But yet, as a woman of God, respectfully, you have yet to say anything. So I'm gonna sit and wait till after the meeting to see how we gonna address this.
That's the last one? Okay. So we will move to the mayor's report. So, good evening. At this time, I would like to introduce to you our interim Police Chief Royce Carpenter. If you'll stand where they can see you. Chief Carpenter has been busy meeting with different departments within the Police Department, as well as the Civil Service Commission, the prosecutors, Sheriff Norwood, the Camden Housing Authority, and others. We are currently taking applications for police officers and dispatchers, and we'll be doing testing on July the twentieth. During his meeting with the Housing Authority, discussions were made regarding housing patrol. This is a program that we used to have, but it had gone by the wayside, but during this meeting that he had with Ms. Garrett, they were able to talk through this, and this program will be started back very soon, possibly even this week. With this program, the Housing Authority will have off-duty officers who will patrol in both vehicle and on foot in the housing areas. The program will be paid for by the Housing Authority. This will in no way decrease the patrols that will also be done by the Camden Police Department during their regular shifts. Also, you see Mr. Tom Vaughn sitting at the table tonight, he is now in the position of Assistant to the Mayor. I do call him more the Planning and Development Manager. He will be working on planning and development grant, planning and development grants and human resources. So I would, at this time, also like to introduce you to our new code enforcement officer, Ms. Jeanette Sewell. Jeanette has worked in the office for four years, and she has done a lot of cross-training under Mr. Vaughn's guidance. Now, as to the accounting firm that issued a proposal to us for doing our accounting work, they will be coming in later this week to meet with Donna and Kayla about questions on their proposal and to get those things ironed out, so we can move forward with that. Tonight, I'd also like to recognize Ms. Evelyn Gully, along with other teachers that's here. If you ladies would rise for just a moment. You may remember, when the Housing Authority was here, they mentioned that they would like to do study halls within the Housing Authority, but they had trouble finding teachers to do that. Well, Ms. Gully was here that night, she heard it and really felt a passion in her heart, and she went home and wrote a six-page proposal to give to them. We now have study halls in Lincoln Center, Fort Lookout, and Ivory Heights. I appreciate what they did, Ms. Gully asked me to come to Lincoln Center this past week. I went over there to tour their rooms and to tour what they were doing, and I wanna say, she had the kids excited about learning. They were doing science projects, and it was fun, and they were telling me the fun they had had that day with their water bottles and vinegar and doing their experiment to blow up the balloons, and the day before where they'd had Sunday, no, they'd had root beer floats is what it was, and they told me what the solid was, what the liquid was, and the reaction, and they were having fun with this. The kids were learning. I appreciate these women, and please give them a round of applause. This weekend, we had the Cow Ripken State Tee Ball Tournament here in Camden. We had sixteen teams that came to Camden to play, and we've heard some wonderful feedback from restaurants about customers that was in there after the tournament. Also, this last week, I was able to attend a prayer service at Feed My Sheep Soup Kitchen, and this is going to be opening very soon on Cleveland Avenue. It is down between the Water Tower and Alderman McCoy's Church. Beautiful place. Ms. Hicks has worked hard on her dream, and I'm excited about the opportunity this is going to bring to serve the citizens of Camden. We have the Carnes Park Pool and Splash Pad up and running after repairs. We had a little delay because the chlorinator pump went out after we made all the repairs, and of course, there wasn't one in South Arkansas, but they are up and going. They are open every day except Mondays. We are also offering swimming lessons and water aerobics in the mornings, so if you are interested in that, please call Public Works, and they will give you all the details. Pickleball courts are now open inside Plant a Seed Building on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays, and there's new players coming every week. They are excited about what's going on with that new sport here in Camden. Dirt works being done in preparation for the new inclusive playground in Carnes Park, and we're excited about it coming over the next couple of months and the opportunity that it's going to bring for our families to be able to come together and enjoy outdoor activities here in Camden. With that, we'll move to old business. Ordinance number eight twenty-four, and who will introduce this?
Ordinance number eight twenty-four, and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Camden, Arkansas, amending Camden Code Sections 246, 252, and 253 regarding purchases and contracts and for other purposes.
Make a motion to approve.
And this is the third and final reading. Do we have any discussion?
Now, we was going from what to what? We was going back to what now?
Twelve thousand five hundred and twenty.
To twenty.
The state is at thirty-five, but we're going to twenty. Any other discussion? Roy, Paul?
Argued?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Moore?
No.
Askey?
Abstained.
Winters?
Yes.
Remix?
Say that again.
I'm sorry, what?
Say again.
Um, yes or no on the ordinance?
Yes.
Castleberry?
Yes.
LaCoy?
Okay, now we will move to new business, Resolution Number Thirty-two Twenty-four, introduced by the mayor.
Resolution Number Thirty-two Twenty-four, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Camden, Arkansas, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Washita County Cooperative Extension Service to provide educational programs.
Motion to approve? Second. Okay, we're in discussion, and I have asked Ms. Carrie Weatherford to please come up. She is with the Extension Service.
Hey, guys, I'm Carrie Weatherford, I'm with the Washita County Extension Office. I'll give you guys what I like to call my elevator speech about what we do. For those of you who are not aware, we do a little bit of everything. So we have three major capacities to all of our programs. We have our Family and Consumer Science, our Agriculture, and our 4-H and Youth Development. So our Family and Consumer Science, we have Karen Simpson here. She is our Family and Consumer Science, so she's gonna do programs on nutrition, fitness, food safety. She does the classes where our restaurants have to have a food safety class to be able to have their license and to be able to make sure that our food is safe. She teaches those classes and makes sure that those are offered throughout, and she does that in combination with other counties. She is a part of our Extension Homemaker Program, so those are our volunteers. They do all kinds of things in the community, they actually wrote a check today for five hundred dollars for a scholarship for a young lady. They are doing things, they've taken food over to your fire department and stuff like that at different times, so they're active in the community as well. And then we have our 4-H and Youth Development. So we have a 4-H program assistant, her name is Tiffany, and she helps me and Karen with the 4-H program. So that is hands-on education for youth aged five to nineteen. So that is what I got really excited when I heard about the ladies over here. We used to work with, when the, when the Housing Authority had a summer program and an after-school program, we were involved in that. So I'm gonna need to be talking to these ladies before it's all said and done, because they sound like just the kind of parents and adults that, that we can work with these kids and give them the opportunities to learn through the hands-on, fun activities that we can offer. We offer things, I left a group that was working on parliamentary procedure to come to our meeting tonight. After that, they were working on learning a little bit about recycling and how it helps our community. We have our Agriculture Program, and that's, that's me. I'm going to be your person that you call if your tomatoes have a disease, or if you have a pasture and it's not growing appropriately or your cattle aren't getting the nutrition you're looking for. If you have an insect in your pasture that's gonna take away the feed and you're gonna lose out on money or something of that nature, we're here to help you find when you utilize a chemical and when you don't, when it's appropriate. Same with the garden, we're gonna tell you when it's appropriate to use a chemical for your garden, we're gonna tell you when it's appropriate not to. So sometimes I like to say that we handle everything, Family and Consumer Science handles everything from, if it is not a human, or if it is a human, if it grows and you wanna kill it or keep it alive, that's me, if it's not human. Okay? So your weeds in your garden, your weeds in your yard, the insects in your garden, the tomatoes that you want to- She also does the Best Care Program, our daycares. They need a license. They need certain trainings to keep their license open, to have their doors open. She's here teaching that class. So she's going to do the child development side of things as well. And then we have our Youth Development, which is all of us combined, offering all of our knowledge to our kids. So this is a program that we've had in Washita County for probably forever, and we've asked for you guys to support in the help of fifty-five hundred dollars a year to help continue our program. Is there any questions?
Where are you located?
We are located in y'all's building, actually.
Our building?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
We got a building?
The technology building.
This the building I asked for so long time ago that we had a young lady down there could start teaching all of the kids over in Carver Courts, Ivory Heights. We weren't utilizing it right, I thought, but we gave it to the county. I'm just asking.
And I got some questions for her.
Yeah, first, okay, we located in the tech building.
Yes, sir.
But, and I hear you saying that you're going to work with the Housing Authority and everything, and that's a good thing.
Yes, sir.
But what is your attendance? I mean, it's...
Okay, so that's a really good question, and it's a hard question to answer. So if you're looking at different programs, I'm out in the field, in the county, in the city, in every city, every day. So when I see people one-on-one here and there, and then I see four-H groups, I see tonight, the group I had probably had twelve or fifteen in there, that was one four-H club. There's other four-H clubs. Then there's our four-H camps. So our sewing camp that we just had, we had six in that camp. Our barbecue camp had seven. The camp we're gonna have next week, we'll have four. You had seven at the camp that she put on, cooking in the kitchen. Yes, so that's a hard question to answer.
So you're not stationed there with your class?
Absolutely not, that's right.
Or moving around? Okay.
Mr. Moore?
Yes, yes.
Is this the first year? Is this your first year you've sponsored this?
No, sir. I believe we started this in twenty-eighteen.
Yeah, well...
Because the budget not, not co-op.
Right, correct. Um, I've been here for, I think, twelve years, and it was well before I was here.
I got one more question.
Yes, sir.
With you guys being in the tech center, I mean, would that be like a meeting place to say, you're right across street from Carver Courts?
Yes, sir.
But I'm just saying that if the children from Carver Court wanted to come and be a part, do you have a meeting place down there?
Of any program we do, anybody is always welcome to any program we do. Now, as far as bringing them across, that's fine. In the past, when we started the original community garden that was over there years, years ago, we had talked to Cecil about actually bringing the kids over to that, and his concern was a liability issue about crossing the road. So that may have changed, but I know that when we had done it, that was a concern. Not to say that that could have changed and we couldn't utilize that. Yes, sir.
Okay. But I have talked with Carrie and Tiffany regarding starting four-H programs in the housing areas.
Which we are looking forward to doing again, especially with the, that makes for an easy group to get those kids. And we have curriculum, so much curriculum, and it's so many different varieties of topics. One of my favorite things about four-H is that what it enables is a child to get a little taste of everything and to find their interests and to funnel it down as they grow and find out what they can do with their future.
Well, you know, to hear that, that's good, and I'm glad you're going to extend olive grass to the young ladies back there, you know, just working.
I hope so.
Within the housing project, but, you know, just hearing what you all got going on about better living and stuff like that, I mean, coming up in the projects, I mean, I wasn't trying to grow none when I come up in the project, but, you know, you got plenty more programs.
Oh, yes, sir. We have, we have the robotics and engineering side of things. We have the science.
Are you talking about parliamentary stuff?
Yes, sir.
Stuff like that. So, I mean, stuff like that, that's helpful and it'll help them with their education at school.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Moore, did you have questions?
I got a bunch of questions. I went through this. I've always met you here.
Yes, sir.
And I didn't have a problem with the fifty-five hundred dollars. I didn't know what fifty-five hundred dollars going through with the amount of kids over there.
Okay.
And I got some research, and I did some Googling, if they say, with University of Arkansas and all of this. But what really got me was is the purpose of this agreement is to establish the terms under which UADA will provide educational program in Washita County in the city of Camden. Educational priorities and activities are planned with the input of the County Extension Council and offered to locations and time appropriate to meet the needs of the citizens who receive them. In return, Camden agrees to pay an annual appropriation for the programs delivered. UAD agrees to provide educational program in areas of agriculture and natural resources, family and consumer science, community and leadership development, and four-H development. Uh, no disrespect or anything, and I've been dealing with kids for about thirty-five, forty years now, and I try to teach them something, a trade. Everybody ain't gonna grow tomatoes.
Agreed.
And, you know, don't take this wrong, but four-H, I know about four-H.
Yes, sir.
It's a good program for those that want to get off in agriculture. We had one in our school system, but we had a shop in our school system. We had a welding class in our school system. Those were viable careers that people went into because I received a welding license. I received a carpenter's license, and it really got me started in my career as far as laboring, working and doing things. And I thought I did pretty good. But, I mean, my father taught me how to grow tomatoes, but I didn't want to grow tomatoes.
Yes, sir.
You understand what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
And I don't think everybody want to grow tomatoes.
Okay.
And I don't think everybody want to be some of the things that you are having here, but you said there's an expansion here. I'd like to hear that expansion, because everybody's not going to be a doctor, a police officer, or a lawyer. There should be some, something here to appeal to everybody.
Yes, sir.
Have you ever been in Carver Courts and walked around and talked to the kids? I lived there for a long time.
Yes, sir, I have.
Okay. What kind of field do you get from as far as their interests?
Um, let's see, it's been a little while since I've been there.
How long has it been?
Well, since the program ended, when they quit doing the after-school program, so COVID.
So we didn't go back and make contact with the kids there, or the level of kids there before we established this program?
Yes, sir. We actually tried, well, this is the same program. It was within...
I understand, but...
Yes, sir. So we actually made, we actually did make those efforts with all four Housing Authorities. And that was one of those, and I don't think, they have been the first year after COVID where they came back and they were trying to do a summer program, and there were some issues with getting the grant that Cecil had put together to feed, and the program did not make. So part of getting any program together is having a place where the kids want to come and having the adults to help supervise.
That's the key.
Yes, sir.
They gotta want to come.
Yes, sir.
But they come when they see things that they want to learn.
Okay.
And I found that to be very valid dealing with young people.
I agree one hundred percent.
Because young people really think that nobody cares about them. I heard Bishop Arnold talk in the area, these kids don't think nobody care about them. Nobody, because they come to me and talk to me. And the only thing I can tell them is, you know, have faith. But we can't keep, it's not a cookie cutter to be able to train him and train them.
Oh, no, not at all.
You understand what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
And that's why I went in the field that I went into. They all good fields, but everybody not going to be in agriculture.
Oh, no.
You know? I don't want to label anybody with it, but not a lot of us going to be in agriculture.
I agree. Have I, I apologize for interrupting. Have I given the impression that it's just agriculture?
No, no, this gave me the impression.
Oh.
Because I read this. It said agriculture and natural resources, family consumer science. I understand the consumer science.
Okay, those are separate entities. Let me rephrase that. I want to make sure that I'm able to answer your questions properly. Four-H is, um, it's opportunities in just about anything you can come up with.
I know four-H. I'm familiar with it.
Agriculture is one portion of what I do that's not necessarily, can be four-H related, but not necessarily. Family and Consumer Science is something that Karen does, not necessarily four-H, but it can be four-H. So we help in the four-H program together, but we also are a part of these other two programs.
I'm one that, I'm more of a hands-on person with kids. I came through the Little Rock Steel Center, fourteen-foot sky. Refrigeration, carpentry, welding. And it caught my eye. It caught my attention. And I'm just saying, everybody that's, you gotta really go into these housing areas and know who's there before you set a plan for them to start growing tomatoes.
Yes, sir, I agree.
You understand? And that's no disrespect. There are going to be somebody going to want to grow some tomatoes, but I bet you eighty-five percent of those people not going to want to grow tomatoes.
I agree.
But our emphasis here, when you give me this and you tell me to give you this money, it's on agriculture. It's on four-H, and I know what all of them stand for. Good programs. You understand what I'm saying? Good programs. But what are we going to do by skill training? And that's what I thought we should have used that building for down there, skill training. Agriculture, refrigeration, carpentry, welding. There's a lot of things can be done. Robotics, I mean, I'm a problem with that. I got a grand boy crazy about it. But what I'm saying, we gotta, we gotta push the envelope. This is a new generation of children.
That is.
You know? I hated to go to the garden in my day, but I understood the benefits of it. And I got a little garden now, but I don't spend all my time in my garden because it's a hobby. But I needed something to be able to support my livelihood and my family and raise my children. So I needed a skill, a trade. And I'm just asking, do you have that ability? Yes, ma'am. Can I ask her?
Yes, she is part of the Extension.
Absolutely, Carrie. Come on, Carrie.
Come on, Karen. Now, I hear you say skill trades.
Yeah.
Not everybody wants to go into skill trades.
Okay.
And so we have life skills that we teach as well.
Sure, that works with anything.
Exactly. But in order for someone to be successful professionally, they have to have that baseline, which is the life skills. That's where we come in. So you would be surprised the number of children who don't learn those life skills at home.
No, I would.
Well, so it should be easy to convince you that we have all of these programs that are of some value. We go into the schools. We do financial planning with children. We also do this with adults. So we teach them about simple check writing, credit. I have a simulation. Mr. Winters is one of our volunteers who helped. The mayor did as well. I would love to see all of you all come and help us with that, because we can do it in any school. But it is beneficial to look beyond agriculture, because you're fixated on those tomatoes. I love tomatoes.
No, I'm not fixated on agriculture.
Well, we're more than agriculture, and that's four-H as well. We are way more than agriculture.
I understand the impact of, America won't eat if we don't have that.
Absolutely. See, and I don't know anything about agriculture.
But how many young men that I have entangled my life with growing up, I'm seventy years old. I didn't meet a lot of people wanting to be a farmer.
Right.
You understand what I'm saying?
Oh, I didn't, I grew up in the hood, so I don't know anything about anybody that want to be a farmer either.
Something to learn to get a foot up or a leg up.
True.
Okay.
That's true, but like I said, not everybody wants to do that. So we want to be able to reach everybody.
I understand.
And so that's, that's...
Let's look at our demographics. I think a little better. And then we'll see what we need to do or how we're going to apply to who we're going to deal with. That's all I'm asking.
Yes.
They've got their little group of things that they do. They're not doing sports programs.
Right.
They're not doing a welding shop. They've got their little specialty, and we're trying to help them do a good job at that, so...
Yes. And they do fun things. They have had fishing derbies. They've had fun days. I went over when they had their barbecue camp, and the kids come over there and they had grills set up for them, and they went through all the safety, how you light charcoal, how you grill. And those kids were proud. I saw what this taking off the grill. They were very happy with it. So they do things that will get the kids in. They've taught them how to babysit, which children do need to know, and like she said, how to do your finances, which is very much lacking. It's a lot of broad spectrum in what they do. Absolutely.
And don't take it wrong, but I didn't raise any of my daughters to grow up and get married and have children. I put them all in career fields. They make their choices.
Right.
Okay. Thank y'all.
No, it's not to ladies. Appreciate it very much. Thank you, ladies. Okay, we've had a motion, a second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm going to abstain.
Any abstained? You will abstain?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution number thirty-three dash twenty-four introduced by the mayor.
Resolution number thirty-three twenty-four, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Camden, Arkansas, amending the operating limits for four to four and for other purposes.
Make a motion to approve.
Discussion?
I've got a question. When the Airport Commission come and gave their presentation, they talked about this car. So if they just now purchasing this car, they talked about this car.
You know that they had one previously?
Yeah.
And it's all used. So they had one donated, and that one is going to go on the front.
So they...
They had, had one.
Okay, so they...
They had one that worked out well, and it benefited, but that one, one more functions were getting...
So they purchasing another.
That's right. Donated, committed to the wooden house.
Okay, I know when they come, they talked about that car. Yeah.
So the side-by-side is something new?
Aye.
Okay. Now, if I don't get too nosy, but what is it for? Ride the site?
Uh, yeah, they're utility vehicles.
Mm-hmm. Got a lot of property out there, out there.
Four hundred acres. So they had the tractor. I think they got something smaller, but I think a thousand or five hundred feet they were using, they were running.
Have they already purchased this?
No.
Not yet?
No.
I've seen them on the side-by-side killing weeds or whatever.
They've got most of the things. They got timber property, they got big fields, they've got a lot there, and they're wrestling and banging up there with the fall sign, and they've got a cross, and they're kind of renting buildings that are falling.
And they're getting ready to have a chuck wagon rodeo out there.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
May I ask who's contracting that timber? Am I privy to that?
It's not a contract.
It's not?
So you're asking that?
Yeah.
They used to previously have a marketing contract, and they're out of it, and right now it's just being grown.
Okay, okay. I know we used to contract it.
They have a contract. They have a contract.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Okay, okay. I know we used to contract it.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Resolution thirty-four dash twenty-four introduced by the mayor.
Resolution thirty-two twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the mayor to purchase a compact excavator. Do an interlocal contract, but for local purchasing and for other purposes.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, discussion? Carol?
Yeah. Thought we did. Can you explain a little bit to me once he gets to?
Ever bought, buy a million dollars worth of equipment in the last year?
No. No. We bought a lot of equipment last year. Nothing was a compact excavator. This was approved on this year's budget.
You don't have anything comparable to this?
No, we have a, we have a mid-size. This is a small excavator. Yeah.
The smaller does stuff with the mid-size one.
Yes, yes. This is a three-ton unit. The one we have is a twenty thousand pound unit. So, we can't get it in certain places. This is a smaller.
Stand-up, the one stand-up?
No, it's a sit-down. It's got a cab, air conditioning, just a whole lot smaller.
Track?
Yes, yeah, rubber track. That way it won't tear up the roads. Made for, it's for the street department to help them do their street cuts, uh, do their ditches, things like that. Our big one's the house tear downer.
You, you broke that up. Where are we at with our house tearing down?
Well, let's stick to the.
He brought it up there.
But that's not me.
Well, we can bring that up at the end.
We put it in the budget though, right?
Yes.
Yes, it's in the budget.
Is that it for me?
All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain?
I had an abstain, but Mr. Frye's gonna explain that to me. We can do that after the meeting. I wanna know more about this, uh, this group Sourcewell. Okay.
Can I find that?
Yes.
Uh, so the fuel, Sourcewell is basically a, uh, co-operative purchasing. So, normally we have to bid things out. So, we have to bid out, say, we bid thirty-five thousand. So, they have a program that really goes out and gets what used to be called fleet prices, contract prices. And so, they have, you can go on, they've got a website, they've got a catalog. And anything you find in that catalog is already being done, really, a bidding process. So, a lot of that starts with the partner. So, basically, a program we just buy, so even the catalog has already had a connection with bidding process.
Okay, now, a little research I did said they are a procurement service. Do they work for the government? Are they independent?
They're independent. We have separate, we have a separate agreement authorized us to obtain a bid number with them or purchase number with them. That was approved by the county for us to get in progress.
I remember that.
Uh, so you're not, they're not, they're not the government.
So, it's a private entity?
They're a private entity, and they contact that, and it's.
They got their hand in this, okay.
Anybody that wants to, of course, your stuff is a little at heart.
Right.
Hey, that's the, I mean, I like this, they got a contact this baby, and this is anybody involved in that. They got a lot of chooses from, but I would say.
But they bring you what you, what they wanna bring you, basically.
Well, no, you've got a catalog to use from.
Right, right.
Yeah, but this is the excavator that we were looking for, and they brought it to us.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
That was in their inventory.
Okay. Ordinance nine twenty-four, who will introduce this?
You need to introduce first. I'm always a sucker for that. I mean, introduce.
Ordinance number nine twenty-four, and order submitting section six, building and building regulations, article two, plumbing of the City of Camden, Arkansas code of ordinances, adopting by reference the twenty-eighteen Arkansas Plumbing Code and the twenty-eighteen Arkansas Fuel Gas Code and for other purposes.
Oh. Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Are you making a motion to spin the rules?
Uh, yes, put this up for, uh, for the formal reading or kind of.
I thought we were going in discussion.
Yep.
If she wants to, keep the ball down the road. Okay, we don't go forward, but Jeanette, we're okay with that because we would like, if the public has some comments about us, you know, plumbers, if they wanna come forward and make these comments for us to look at, we're okay with that, but.
I got some homeowners gonna come forward.
This, this is make-up or anything? Yes, we're actually on two thousand six. We're probably four codes behind, but never have been.
Yeah, let me.
And so, we're just trying to get up to where the state is. So, and, you know, cause people are coming to us, and they're doing certain, plumbing a certain way. But under our state orders, it's getting good that way, but under the state, it ends with all those conflicts. So.
If we're all the same, then everybody can get along a little easier.
Outstate plumbers come in, they already know what they're doing, come in here now, you know, we kinda have to go out in two thousand six. So, that makes four, four, far from fast.
So, is this, this putting us on the same page with the state? It is?
Or better or worse.
Yeah. My question's to you. I got a lot of questions, and you know where I'm going with it, the owners. You know, there was a time when I built a house, but we did, I did the wrong, the money. Now, I, I, I didn't ate through this and digested this, so where are we at with that? I couldn't find it anywhere. Maybe I didn't have.
It's, it's in the, the, the book itself, which you're welcome to come review and look at. But homeowners are allowed to.
Still do?
Yes, sir. Home, they still have to do it by code.
Right.
But they're still allowed to do it.
But they're still allowed to do it.
Now, the state says that if you build a home and you do your own work, you must live in it for at least two years.
Yeah, no problem.
But that's just because in case something goes wrong, it can be looked at.
Understand.
But yes, sir, homeowners can still do their own work.
Homeowners still have that responsibility.
They still gotta pull a permit, and they're still supposed to do it to code, but they can do their own work.
That was another question I ran up over in this other section. If I'm gonna replace my, let's say, my kitchen faucet, I need to come up and get a permit?
No, sir. Kitchen faucets are exempt in, in the code.
But if I do major, uh, plumbing in that system, I need to come get a permit?
Right, anything that would affect the health and safety if you did something wrong. Uh, if you put your sewer line in wrong and it's gonna cause issues, yeah. Or if you cross-contaminated your water line in some way and it would blow back into the system, yes, sir.
So, so, I can't replace my sewer line?
You can, yes, sir, but you have to come get a permit.
I get a permit nettle.
Okay, that's, that's, that's fine and cool, but.
If you own the home.
Huh?
If you own the home.
Okay. But tying it into the.
Right.
To the city.
Now, if you tie it to the city, you have to pay a tap fee as well.
Tap, but you, you don't have to have a certified plumber?
No, sir. No, sir. You can do your own plumbing. Inspectors, you get a permit. Inspectors, we inspect.
But with a gas line.
We're plumbing inspectors.
But with a gas line, you have to get a pressure, pressure test once?
When you get a pressure test, you do have to have a plumber do that.
Now, now, in the past, and I, I understand what you're saying, but I'm trying to find it in these codes. I, I went through all of this here, and I.
And that just.
There was a time.
Outlines things, Mr. Moore. You're more than welcome to come look at that.
I'll come look at it.
Yes, sir.
But I know we were, uh, I had rental properties, and I did pressure checks on it. Had you all come out, everything's okay. But that's changed.
They were, that changed several years ago. They used to be lenient on that and allow city inspectors to kind of make their decisions on that, but they, with explosions and carbon monoxide and that kind of stuff, it's gotten to where they wanna see a licensed plumber.
I just don't want y'all trying to lock me up.
Summit will look for that licensed plumber tag, the licensed plumber, uh, signature that we put on those things now, so. And they can reject it if they don't think it was done by a licensed plumber.
Okay, now, I wanna ask you a question that doesn't apply to you, but I, I'm in a situation with Summit. I found a leak on one of my meters. And I called them out. They came out and looked at it, and they said, it ain't that bad. And they said, well, we're not, I'm not gonna mess with it right now. I said, but based on the, uh, pressure draw in the winter, I have to build pressure to maintain pressure within the reservoir. And he said, ah, it's not gonna cost you that much.
Yes, sir. If you'll let me know the address, we will work on that.
We'll, we'll work.
We've had that situation come up a couple of times, and we've been able to resolve that.
It's on their side, that's why they didn't mess with it.
Yes, sir, but we've been able to resolve that with our local, uh, guys that do the work.
Yes, sir.
Give me a Reader's Digest version of what we're changing here. I'm, I'm basically a skeptic of when these folks from New York or somewhere write some new plumbing codes or electrical codes. They've got some new gadget or widgets they're wanting to sell, and they're man-baiting us to buy. There's new gadget.
That kind of works a little more into the electrical code than it does the plumbing code.
So, what's the?
So, the plumbing code is based on the International Plumbing Code. Like you said, somebody somewhere writes it. State of Arkansas takes it in for a year plus. They go through it. They have plumbers and all, and citizens come in, and they do committees, and they revamp it, based on what Arkansas, what they feel Arkansas needs are. What we're doing is we're pretty much adopting the entire thing. Now, I will tell you on there, what we're saying is, uh, in that, what we're saying is that we're going to adopt them. Every time the state adopts them, we agree to go ahead and adopt it, as is. Now, we can always change that if necessary. That's just what cities are doing now, so they don't have to go through this progress, process of, I mean, the two thousand eighteen plumbing code, this is two thousand twenty-four. They're getting ready to do another plumbing code in a couple of years, so, um, so we're automatically adopting every year, both of those codes. Uh, we don't use the fuel gas code much in, in this area in southern Arkansas, but we do some spots. Uh, if you'll also look, some of the fees did change, went up by five dollars a couple of them. It just, uh, kinda offset, 'cause that code was put in place in the nineties, and we were still going by.
Kinda saw that doggoneness in there with them new rises.
Uh, and then we added the fact that if you do your own plumbing, and substantial plumbing, you'll need to come get a separate permit. Cause if you're building a house, it's all covered under the building permit. But if you're just plumbing, you'll have to come get a plumbing permit. Uh, which was done in the past. Somewhere down the line, it got, it stopped being done, but there actually, there is a line, I believe, in the budget for plumbing permits, so.
Then, do you, are you telling me that in this ordinance, if we pass it, there's some language in here that says, we shall in the future automatically adopt, really?
Yes, it's at the very front top up there.
This one by reference, meaning cities, you know, the state is announced, and also conditions as adopted by the state.
I'd just hate to be a rubber stamp. This is first reading.
This is first reading.
We hadn't passed the suspending the roofs yet.
I was just trying to get some discussion.
And I'm, and like I said, my office, or, I'm sorry, Jeanette's office now, is good with waiting two, three readings, because we want you guys to feel comfortable with it, so we want the citizens to feel comfortable with it. There's not really much of a change. Matter of fact, some of the things in this plumbing code actually is a little easier. They've done away with a three-inch vent, common vent, uh, and now you can actually have your water line and your sewer line in the same ditch. So, in some ways, this has really made it a little easier.
Have you had, I'm gonna say, any significant feedback from the local plumbers?
Not yet, no. I'm gonna be honest with you, they all carry their two thousand eighteen in their truck anyway. They have to, because that's what they're tested on. They have to have a copy of it, and they're tested on the two thousand eighteen already. And it's caused, that's what's causing the issue, because they're on two thousand eighteen, they were trained, their license is based on that, and we're two thousand six.
So, we're good with the first reading?
Yes.
And we'll study this? Okay, we will move to other business, and I did have one more thing I wanted to talk about. Alderman Rennix was by my office this week, and we had some discussions regarding neighborhood watches. I've mentioned neighborhood watches to you before, and I have had a discussion with Chief Carpenter regarding this.
Yes, yes. I had already, I had already, just so happened that incident that transpired in my neighborhood on Missouri Street that Bishop Ball was talking about. I didn't know about it until about a couple of days later, when somebody walked up and told me about it. And I didn't know about it, didn't hear about it. And, uh, we do have a neighborhood crime watch over there, and it, now, it had been active since, uh, a lot of you all knew Carl Stewart. He was president in, uh, the past. And, uh, I'm vice over there, so, so, uh, it kinda hit me hard, but I found out about it. But also, in the neighborhood, over there in Cuba's, over there in, uh, Peacock District, which is Cuba Circle over there, you know, they had been asking about it. And so, you know, we wanna get a, try to work with a neighborhood crime watcher during that time, they had a coordinator. We used to have a, a coordinator at the police department. It used to be, it used to be, uh, Buckshot Smith used to be the coordinator over there. And so, we really wanna get back on the, on the, uh, ball with that and kind of get that to rolling again, and, and get some of those individuals trained, and get, get them qualified, you know, and find out. You know, it, it definitely been an interest, you know, of mine, and, and our neighborhood. A couple of people from the neighborhood talked about it, and, you know, it just, you got to be leaders and stand up for your neighborhood. And if you wanna, uh, implement a neighborhood crime watch, you need to, uh, come up and, you know, and be a leader, and if you got an interest in, in it, uh, we're gonna talk to the chief, you know, the general chief. I don't know him, I don't know him well. Where is he at? Wait, what?
He's.
Okay, okay. I, I didn't even know him. I just heard, heard, heard his name. I heard his name down through the years, but never knew him personally, so. But that's what we wanna do, is, I was, I hear you, uh, Mr. Arnold, Bishop, we hear, I hear you. And, uh, we just wanna try to get together, you know, as a community and, and, uh, uh, work that thing out, and we stay professional.
So, I hope all the Aldermen will do, is Alderman Rennix, and reach out, and let's try to start some. I know there is one in Cherokee, one in Pine Hills, and one in Byrd. But we have a lot more area of our community that needs neighborhood watches. So, let's talk to our citizens within our wards and see if we can get some of those going.
Go ahead.
No, you go ahead. I tried to get a hold of you, but I didn't get a hold of you.
I've been.
Okay, which one?
I wanna ask about the, uh, you brought up in the mayor's report about the accounting firm. Now, you saying they coming in to, to kind of help out, or?
No, they, they sent a proposal for doing our accounting.
Okay.
But there was some things on the proposal, payroll being one of them, that Donna and Kayla feel like, hey, we can handle payroll within the house. We've had one meeting with them, so they're gonna come back for a second meeting. So, now that we've had some time and seen their proposal, we can talk through this and say, hey, we don't need this part, but we need your help here. What questions do you have? So, we can get the proposal more fine thing to our needs.
And I wanna bring something else up, if you don't mind. On that last, when we was reading, and then we was, uh, giving the name on the, the year and the day on that church ordinance that we had in the old building. When I was hesitant, I wanna make this clear. It was a question that I should've asked earlier, when we were, you know, when we raising that up. Uh, after you have the, the power to, uh, to get, buy, purchase stuff within the municipal, you know, for different things that you need, equipment and stuff, you will bring all the receipts back to the council that we can look at it, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's, I did wanna make that clear. That's why I was hesitant on that. I, I should've asked that question earlier, but I didn't.
Yes, sir.
If I would say it right, I think the only difference there.
If I would say it right, I think the only difference there would be is, we don't have to advertise for.
Correct.
Is it, it's a pre-approved dollar amount that this organization provides.
Thousand to twenty thousand, now we'll have to, at least.
We have to get quotes, we do not have to put the sealed bids in the newspaper advertising.
Well, he, I thought he was talking about the purchase from that special agency is what, I thought you were talking about the.
No, he was talking about.
Okay, all right, I was thinking about the, it was a different order.
Yeah. But we went from twelve to.
Yeah, that was, yeah, different, yeah, sorry about that.
Mr. President?
Two things, first and foremost, I am getting bombarded, and I agree with it, by the way, I'm getting bombarded by the residents in my neighborhood about the possibility of putting a couple of speed bumps on Cherokee and Osage Streets, because they run the full length of the neighborhood, and people have done, I've seen people come through there at sixty miles an hour, and a lot of cross streets there, some of them are yield sand, some of them are stock sand, nobody ever stops, except for me, but, you know, we can slow down and take a good look, but anyway, it is a lot of speeding down Cherokee and Osage, and I have had a lot of residents over there to ask, is it, would it be possible for us to get two speed bumps on each one of those streets to let people know that they should slow down? Ted, I agree with them, I wish they had one right in front of my house.
I'm a resident in this too.
Yeah.
I've been asking for speed bumps on Maple and Chestnut, years, huh?
And, you know, there's, well, I won't get into, I won't get into that, because that's something for someone else to figure out, but there are ways of doing speed bumps and stuff that are not. I had, I had the police park bring the radar unit over a couple of times, of course, they put it on Choctaw Street, which is.
One block?
Yeah, half a block, so, so it did, it did do very well there, but, but they did put it over on Osage Street, after Choctaw, I got them to move it over to Osage Street, and it showed a lot of speeding down Osage, and a lot of the residents over there, numerous residents over there have asked, that I bring up the fact that they could possibly get a couple of speed bumps over there. And then the second thing is, Summit has contracted with Pike Gas Pipelines, and to put in new gas lines and things, Pike did their thing, drilled under the road in front of my house, and me and my neighbor both started having issues with our sewer lines, and come to find out, they went through both dead center, both of our sewer lines, trying to get a gas line under the road, and I had, I had plumbers out and they were running rotor routers and all this stuff in there, they knew when they hit something, but they didn't know what they hit, and we finally dug, we finally dug everything up and found the issue, and had to have it cut out and put back in, but those lines were under pressure, and, and what I told them was, I was afraid that if, if, if people kept running equipment through the sewer line and kept bumping into a gas line and stuff, and that gas leaks into that sewer, we could have some pretty massive explosions, not just where I live, but anywhere that they're doing all of this, so, but, water and sewer came out, and they helped Pike locate where the issues were and everything, and nobody wants anything like that, and I'm just, I'm just saying that that really should be a priority in the neighborhoods, if somebody's having any kind of a problem whatsoever, they need, they really need to consider the fact of getting someone to come in and run a camera or something like that, because if they just continue to try to do it, because if we had to continue and we had ruptured that gas line, it would have filled up hours to our homes, to city main, the whole, whole nine yards, it could have been, it could have been a terrible thing that happened. And I've noticed that they've cut the street between my house and the south end of Cherokee Street, they've cut in the street eight places, just like the one that they cut at my house to find the, find the broken land, so I don't know if all eight places of those were lands that they had damaged, but I don't know that they weren't either, so, I know they did cut the streets.
Shouldn't they do a one call on each, like the water, gas line?
They did, they had, they had multicolor paint all over our yards and streets and driveways and all this, but it didn't work.
I'm kind of with Pike, who's the contract coordinator for that, the gas?
I don't know who the contract coordinator for Pike, we do know who Summit contracts with Pike.
Well, normally, I'm seeing Pike in my area over there.
They can be all.
They, they doing a lot of digging, I know they got to do their job, but they, they leaving them a little unsafe, sometime they don't fill them in, sometime they do fill them in. Then, here's the thing that bothers me though, Tom, is that on, on one street I got there, which is Advisor on the north end, we dug it up, I bet you ten times, so whatever they're doing is keep going wrong, and they go back and dig it up again, and that blocks that whole street. The mayor and I had a talk, that's why I wasn't interested in trying to do any streets over there, because they just going back and re-dig it.
That's the kind of thing, as we've been looking at streets, that's kind of been, we're kind of having a pinpoint which ones they're done with, which ones they're not going to do, because they, it is a destructive process for places.
I know it's got to be done, but, you know, at some point, you need to get it right.
We do get a lot of complaints, we could try to address them with our Summit coordinator, like Jeanette, has them on speed dial.
I just thought we, you know, when I see them go back in there two or three times, something's going on. The only other thing is, I had two more others, we, we got a lot of kickball going, I got some young men playing ball at Our Clark Park now on Sundays and during the week, I'd like to get a little bit more police control over there, and it's, it's not that they get out of whack, but I need to see them ride through sometime, the parking gets crazy on both sides of the streets, I'm not blowing my whistle, but if I pull my boat out and go fishing, I won't get back in my yard that night. And I'm just saying that, you know, if we had a little bit more proactive, you know, we used to do that, ride through, and then you didn't see too much bad.
On Sunday afternoons.
But it's, it's, it's Wednesdays now.
I know that practice on Wednesdays.
I like for them to be there, that's where they're supposed to be, that's a park, it's free, but we, we need to conduct ourselves in a manner, and you know the problem we have with the parking on the field?
Yes.
Mayor came out, put cable up, we stopped that, because the children couldn't play at the playground, we had everybody parking there.
Right, and I love the fact that Jasmine Moore has been instrumental in getting these kickball teams together, and they do have, this past Sunday, there's four teams that played, since it's so hot, they start about six thirty to play, but I drive by every Sunday afternoon and see how many's out there, and there is a lot of cars, there is a lot of people. She is also planning a back-to-school bash coming up soon, and I will send you information on that, and they're gonna have kickball tournaments, three-on-three basketball tournaments, inflatables, food for the kids. I love seeing Ivor Clark Park come back and be active, we're also playing some co-ed softball games out there, they're playing at Boe Farms and Ivor, and it's wonderful to see people in our parks again.
And if you want to make donations to them, like, you know, it gets hot out there, there's nothing, no shade or nothing, and they're using all my tents, so if you want to donate them some, it would be appreciated.
I got two things, I don't know if you're gonna do a lot of things, but the first thing is, I talked about at the end of last year, about before we put somebody in position to help pay scale in place, if we put somebody in those positions, and I've yet to hear whether there was pay scale in place or not, I'd really like to know that. And the second thing is that me, as the Alderman in Ward, with my heart and ask you, I just feel that the city council should not be charging people to use that Team Town, it's in bad, it's in bad shape.
I agree with that too.
No, we're not supposed to be renting it, unless it's someone that absolutely insists, and they have to go look at it, but I've told them not to rent it.
Yeah. Now, I, I inquired about that, and they told me everything's okay.
I had somebody come and run, come up, they had an event here maybe about a month ago, I guess it was right during the time of Juneteenth, and they jumped my brother, thinking it was me, you're ultimate, you know, and they, the Team Town, it's horrific, you know, y'all shouldn't even rent that thing out.
I told them not to.
Madam Mayor, I, did I get an email or something about that?
Yes.
About the grant?
Yes, you got an update and an email today.
But we still weigh off of them.
They said it was.
I'm in contact with SWAT D, and they're in contact with city people, they're telling it's two months away before they'll make a decision on it, and I'm hoping, I'm hoping they'd get together quicker, but they're telling me it's waiting for two more months. It looks good, they've held up hours, and I think we can deal with both.
Stamps, maybe, I think stamps.
Stamps, and one, another city who was in the same way, we are hoping they held up and reviewed, don't know exactly why, but I know Jennifer Reese submitted, or SWAT D Reese submitted, because they found a little perp or something they wanted corrected, but now they just, they've been very slowly approving stuff, but we're very hopeful, SWAT D seems all very good about it, so we're very hopeful that it's gonna come through. October starts their new round, so.
You, you, you know, I get a lot of people calling me frustrated, because it's, it's like we just went ahead and damaged corn pods, nothing you can do with it, I'm just telling you what I hear, they say you can't do nothing down there, no shade down there, the building's on work, this, 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 okay, I take that.
Nobody wants to come through, nobody wants to make, I'm like you, I spent a lot of time down there when I was, that was where I spent all my time.
Back to the Team Town, we did discuss that we weren't gonna rent it out, right?
We did, so we've had some people, Our Clark has been full, or it's not big enough for what they want.
But we discussed in this council that we weren't gonna rent it.
Yes, it's, we want to come in and think of them, we've got to go look at it, have to go look at it.
Some of them that's been there has been our employees, and they've asked, and they go and look at it first.
We, we, we don't just say, okay, here you go, look, you gotta go look at it.
But I thought we said that we weren't gonna rent it out, we, hold, wait a minute, we said here that we wasn't gonna rent the Team Town, and we doing it.
We're trying to help set some of the places.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, we said, I, I mean, we said we weren't gonna do it, but we, we, we go ahead and, and do it, and, and the place is not fit, it's just not fit, I'm serious, we do not need to rent that place out, I don't care if it is our employees, that place is pitiful, until we get the grant, I mean, if Our Clark is full, then, I mean, get in line or whatever, but I'm tired of hearing about Team Town.
I make a motion that we not vote on not renting Team Town, just because you say it's one thing, if you vote on it, it's something else, that we not rent Team Town until it's new and improved.
You put a motion up?
Yes, that's a motion.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye. Well, I, I, we take, we have to take full responsibility for that, because we had things in place, things were ready, and for some reason, it didn't get.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna mention something, not, not for it, but someone called, and I didn't get to speak to them directly, but my wife passed it on to me anyway, someone called, they were concerned about not having sirens last night for the tornado wash, now, we've gone over that, at least every other year, about how many millions of dollars it costs to do that, so, but I said, well, hey, I'll mention, people, I understand they want it, but that code red is what we're gonna be stuck with, I think.
I, and, and, and I, I had some grandchildren in that area that did, but remember, we discussed that, and said that we would take the parts from those that we could, and make them better for those that, and we tried to strategically do it so it could kind of cover the whole city, because we, we wouldn't come, we didn't have them.
Right.
I got one more question, if, if I may, if I'm in order, the audience participation, Ms. Gossett, the hundred dollars that she supposedly, I mean, is, I mean, I'm curious, I know she's curious, is that on her, is that the landlord?
It is, for as long as it's being the renter and the owner both get that.
Okay.
Okay, it's on the landlord to either clean up, do whatever, or ask the renter to do, but the renter is also informed that that isn't, that the hundred dollars is not on the renter, it is strictly on the owner of the property.
And I believe there was.
And if it's not clearing that letter, we'll make sure that it becomes, it becomes clear that it's not on the.
But that deadline of the nineteenth is for her, because you're gonna make a decision, I mean, well, Janet's gonna make a decision at that time?
Yes, the landlord, the owner of the property, is given till the nineteenth, if they can fix it, or they take it, and so it can be.
But what I'm saying is Janet gonna make a decision, she's coding for us, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, this is the way the procedure on national, I mean, there's kind of thing, is it July the nineteenth, or August nineteenth? So there, in my opinion, from what, as bad a shape as you say it's in, there's no way someone, you're gonna get it fixed by the nineteenth.
No.
So, so if you, I'm wondering, if, and if you're saying, well, if a landowner or the property owner's not gonna fix it, and they say they can't, whether it's practical or work, cost-effective to do it, I don't know, but if they're not, then you've got to move someone out, that's what you talked about before, is, hey, you better find a place to go, we don't want to put you out on the street, but if you start tearing it down, that's basically what's gonna happen, so what's the timeframe on that?
So she has, she has thirty days to correct the issue, or they take the property, because the property does not have it.
Right.
If she doesn't, the court, she'll also place a hundred dollars, they find, the judge will go, the judge will make a decision on it, but she will get a letter that she's in true violation, and to that, the most likely, the most likely file an affidavit to put the landlord or homeowner in it, and then the court, the mayor, and the court makes the decision on tearing the property down, or if the owner, the landowner, let's just say, city, the city says it's inhabitable, you have to be out, and that's what this letter was for, you have to be out by the nineteenth, the city won't allow me to break.
Now, how does that work, now, I know that's not a part of you, but how does that work, it's for the retroactive of the, she says she came and got her payment.
So.
She got, she got her money for the money.
End of July, of course, she's not gonna lose her money, she can stay there, or landlord, rent her, go for it, that'd be a civil matter.
Yeah, that's why I said that.
I paid in June too, I can't.
If her money's back, on that, or we can encourage, but it's a civil matter.
Yeah. Make a motion to adjourn?
One second.
I thought we could answer the questions.
Well, I think, after the meeting's over, I thought it's what.
I think we've answered questions.
We answered all of the questions?
No. No. Our questions prepared.
Come on, let's, let's say what we gonna.
Come on, let's, let's say what we gonna say and do what we gonna do.
You say your.
Yes, we can stay after the meeting and answer questions.
I just want to hear the answer. It's one of my concerns is that people come here and stand at that podium, and they out of getting answers.
Okay.
If we're not gonna do it, let's tell them we not gonna do it.
Well, regarding the safety issues, I've addressed that about three different times, both in the mayor's report and afterwards. Regarding the new patrols within the housing authority, the neighborhood watches, and all of these items, regarding the house on North Street, that house belongs to my pastor. They had contracted someone to mow the yard theirself. I don't have the ownership in that house whatsoever. Mr. Smith went over there and mowed it. He did not ask, but he went and mowed it, it was high next to him, but he also submitted an invoice and was paid well for mowing the yard.
Mayor, my question is this. Why am I judged by your church for drinking alcohol? People at the Cedar Club and Gossips.
That is not a city issue.
Yes, it is. And I get judged in Gossips because my own dad tell me that my yard is less, and the land will be shut down, and y'all calling, I'm in complete disagreement with that, and yet I'm making do what I have, and I'm the one that's the problem individual. I'm just here to take a stand and do what's right, but I'm the problem. I'm here to work with you.
No one has said that you are a problem. As far as drinking and religion, that is not a city matter.
But the proof is like a law of the wisdom.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Gossett?
Yes.
I, I don't know what you heard or didn't hear just a few moments ago, but.
No, I didn't, I didn't.
But what I heard, and somebody will correct me if I'm wrong, what I heard was, the hundred dollar fine would be to the owner, not the renter. But if I understood it right, if this goes forward, if this goes forward, then your landlord will be given a letter giving her thirty days to either fix it or vacate. So there is a possibility that she decides not to fix it. At that point, she would probably ask you to move.
But she already told me that's the way that she wasn't gonna fix it.
Okay. The letter was, but that's, I, I.
I have the letter.
I didn't, I didn't think you heard, and that's why I wanted to try to make it clear so that, but the, the fine will not be levied to you, but to her.
Okay, but my issue is, council, is, ever since this started four months ago, I've been paying you your money on time every month. But you come to me yesterday and tell me that I can't afford to fix it, but you still access my money.
That, I, I'm sorry, that, that is not a, that's not anything that the council can address there. That would have to be a, a civil matter.
And, and I know that, you know, that's what I'm saying. You can't, you can't go and fix nothing, but you can come get your money.
Yes.
You had never laid eyes on me until two weeks ago. You didn't even know who I was. Now, I'm, we ain't, we the best of friends. I don't know you.
You know, it's amazing that we can come in here and we can keep it dog.
I want everything to be right. You know, you see what I'm saying? Because I guarantee you, when I move out of the house, you going in there and you gonna patch it. You gonna patch it so you can put a big price tag on it.
I, I'm not gonna patch it to your landlord.
I know, she's gonna patch it. She's gonna patch it. I know exactly what she gonna do. She gonna patch it, then she gonna put sign up there for a thousand dollars.
And, and I agree with you, that's not wrong.
I know.
But that, that's a matter.
I know, I know, and I'm gonna take care of it.
Yeah, okay.
But thank you.
All right.
But it's great to me.
Mayor, I still need that question answered, that I, out of respect. What are you gonna tell the citizens, or when are you gonna make the announcement? You got little kids that came to my church today scared of living where they're living, and you haven't said anything about the shootings. Not just that they're concerned for a lookout Missouri Street, but the crime is going on all over the city. You haven't said, I understand, I, I understand the chief is here, the interim chief, I'm asking my mayor to make a statement as you do everything else. That's all I'm asking, out of respect.
I cannot make statements when there is open investigations going out.
What?
Meeting adjourned.